Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, December 10th, 2020 work session of the Penfield Planning Board. Due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the Governor's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law. This meeting is being video recorded and also broadcast live on the Town of Penfield's website, www.penfield.org, and on the Town of Penfield's government access channel, number 1303. The meeting will also be later transcribed. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Hetzke?
Hetzke here.
Kenauer?
Kenauer here.
Tidings?
Tidings here.
Burton?
Burton here.
Sangster?
Here.
O'Connor?
O'Connor here.
Weiser?
Weiser here.
Gray, here.
All right, thank you. We have minutes from the October 22nd meeting. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to review, and maybe we can entertain a motion to approve.
Tidings' motion approved. Kenauer, second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right, that's taken care of. Doug, would you like to go through the agenda?
All right, so we have two tabled applications tonight. The first one is 85 Sovereign Drive. We have heard no updates from the applicant or their engineer, so there's no action required at this time by the Board. Our second tabled application is 3090 Atlantic Avenue. I believe we have Don Lewis on the call with us, so hopefully, we can connect him here through here. They responded to PRC comments and provided revised plans at the end of November, addressing many of the comments that staff and the Board had regarding stormwater and how they were handling drainage and grading and things like that.
Go ahead.
The staff still is working through some technical items with them, and we're hoping to get another set of revised plans here shortly.
Okay. So with that, if we're still waiting on more information, we should potentially continue to table?
I'll make a motion to continue to table this application.
We have a second?
Tidings, second.
At this point, is the Board interested in directing staff to begin the Part II AF and approval resolution?
Sure.
I think the meat and potatoes of it, as you put yesterday, is or as you've said before, is sort of how we work on things, and that seems to be pretty solid. It's mostly working out phasing and, you know, positive versus whether they have positive fill, whether they'll need to bring in fill and things like that. I was hoping we could get Don here. Oh, we do have Don. I don't know if you have any questions for Don?
The only questions I guess I would have, if we want to put this into the discussion realm for a moment with a table and motion and second and ready to go, but phasing and how, who and how would drainage, storm drains go in, catch basins, sidewalks, sidewalks on the existing house property, those types of things? If lots are sold off one by one, how is that actually going to happen and who's responsible?
Okay.
So I think that those things need to be addressed so that when we pass a resolution, it's clear how that's going to happen.
Okay. Don, do you want to? Can you hear us? Don, you're on mute.
There we go, sorry about that.
It's all right.
I had a time for joining at 6:30 and was a half an hour off, I apologize.
So did you, were you able to hear the last three minutes of discussion?
No, I just saw it, I didn't hear it, sorry.
Okay. So we're going to get started drafting an approval resolution. However, there are a few concerns that we need to get addressed still. I know staff probably has more than the ones that I'm mentioning, but some of the key things that myself and I would say probably other members of the Board have are the stormwater management, the piping and the catch basins that cover several lots. Who is responsible for putting those in? When do they get put in? Same thing with the sidewalks, especially on the existing property, and who's responsible and when that stuff goes in? Because if the lots are sold off one by one, we just need to know so that it's clear and we don't end up with a problem down the road.
Okay. I had discussions with Doug Sangster on two different occasions this week following, you know, reviewing the comments that were sent over from the last round of PRC comments. And then also in discuss, you know, I took those discussions to the owner and the real estate agent that's been helping us out all the way along. The intention here is to sell this as a full package. The design would be sold to one developer. The developer would treat this no different than if you had a 10-lot subdivision with a letter of credit in place, you know, in order to get his first, with his first building permit that was pulled, whatever lot the developer that he sold this subdivision to, you know, decided to build on first. With that, the letter of credit would be in place. Obviously, all the plan signatures would be in place before he could do, you know, any implementations of any part of this plan. The grading on the plan and the drainage issues would all be incorporated into this letter of credit, much like it would be for like a regular subdivision. In this case, you don't have, the only real shared, or I should say, town costs or municipal costs would be, you know, the erosion control, the grading and the drainage in the rear there for the collection. Those would be in the letter of credit costs, and the rest of the, oh, in the sidewalk, excuse me, in the sidewalk. The rest of the utilities and all that would go in as each lot was developed and each permit was pulled for water, sanitary, and driveway connections. So to safeguard people, because, and I was trying to explain this to, like I said, to the owner, how this is, this is a little bit different than, it's not quite a large subdivision, but it's not quite, you know, someone doing one or two lots.
Right.
I'm trying to explain to them, I go, you don't know what the market's going to bear, and if you do it yourself and you sell Lot 3, you got to make sure that Lot 1 and 2 and, you know, or 2 and 5 and 4 are all left in a way that if you didn't sell another lot, you aren't affecting drainage to anybody else. So everything on the site has to be taken care of so it's ready to go to sell all these lots when you go to work on the first house. So all your erosion control goes in, all the grading happens, all the swales, all drained back to the proposed drainage piping. You know, you get your, you have your construction entrances in, you have your silt fence up, your tree clearing is completed, your temporary seating goes back down, everything gets seeded back, and as you build the houses, and each house and driveway are completed, that all those are, you know, taken care of on their own as well in the same way, and the letter of credit gets reduced every time, so.
Staff comfortable with that so far?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I think we're comfortable with that.
Okay.
As long as we know we can get it kind of constructed all at once rather than piecemeal, that's our main concern is...
Yeah, and then we need that fallback position of, oh, what happens if there is no
Right.
buyer of all four lots?
Right.
What's the, what's the Plan B?
Right.
Okay. So with that, you have enough for the tabling resolution, I'm assuming?
Yes.
So maybe we could vote on that?
So I, I think I propose something to Don. Do you think the owner would be receptive to perhaps temporary easements along the rear of the property that could handle stormwater drainage and stockpile of topsoil and those kinds of issues that could be impacted by one-off buildings and the other lots that statement for a period of time?
Are you, you mean on his property or that goes on to the neighbor's property?
Well, a temporary easement that would go consistent with those four contiguous lots.
Right, it's all his property, right, now, isn't it?
Right, right.
They're individual, they're individual building lots. So once you sell a house, you deed over the rights to that property.
Correct.
So if the first house happens to be in the middle, and then you need to cross through there to make drainage improvements or permanent erosion control improvements or transfer, you know, stockpiling of topsoil back and forth. It's just, it's just an idea, it's one way that might, that might ease the Board's concern for if all of the lots aren't sold to one developer, if they're sold individually, it could be a way to overcome that.
I guess, going back to my first comment or my first statement was that he is, he will not sell these to individual people. It's going to go to, you know, Gerber will buy all four lots, or Morell will buy all four lots, or Burrow, and that's the way he's going to do that, so that that gets controlled with the letter of credit that we're going to post. And then the site will be, will be mass graded, and the only thing that would be left are the small individual topsoiled stockpiles, so that a person, when they go to do, and those will, those will be, there was a comment on the, from the PRC comments, I think Michael Connor made about, you know, wanting a detail that shows, you know, you put your stockpiles up, you put your silt fence around, you put your temporary seating over it, so that, again, if the house isn't sold and, or the lot isn't developed on in two years, at least that's stabilized, but the topsoil is reserved, so when they do do Lot 4, it has its own topsoil pile. So there'll be four-stage topsoil piles for all four houses. But the mass grading, you know, knocking down the berms, filling in the pond, getting all the grading along each, each lot line between each house goes toward these drainage basins in the rear, so they're really, after you do the mass grading that's included in the letter of credit, it'll be done, and it'll all be stabilized. So it'll be just like you were in a, in a subdivision that had 20 houses, 10 on each side of the road. You can work on each lot, they all have their own side yard swales, and all you're working on is each building pad, driveway, house laterals, done. Same idea.
Doug, maybe we make that a conditions for the approval resolution that all of the mass grading, all the drainage swales, all the drainage structure components be put into place before any building permits are issued.
Okay, yeah, we can, I can look at putting that into the approval resolution as a condition. We'll figure out the wording, Lori.
Okay.
Could we, could we change that just a little bit to include the first building permit? That way, when the person is there doing the first lot, that they can, you know, that's kind of incorporated all at the same time, I guess? I don't know, I don't know how much, it shouldn't only take a few weeks to get...
Yeah, but we can look at the semantics of the statement, sure.
Yeah, yeah, I'll take a look at it.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Jim?
Good.
No, otherwise, good, I, I, we can, we can direct staff to start preparing the approval resolution now.
Okay. So why don't we go ahead and vote on this tabling resolution with the directive to begin preparation of the approval resolution? We have a, you moved, right? Who moved it?
Burton. I seconded it.
Oh, yeah. Burton moved it and Tidings seconded.
You ready?
So let's vote.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks, Doug.
I'll be in touch, I'll be in touch probably tomorrow or Monday.
Okay, boy, I really appreciate it, thanks.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Okay.
All right. Next item is, we'll move on to our action items. Our first action item for tonight is 2157 Penfield Road. It's a City Mattress within the Wegmans Target Plaza. They contacted us earlier in late October and early November to do a facade update. The way it was explained was that the, you know, it has the windows up the front, it has windows at sort of a 45-degree angle. Those aren't in very good shape anymore, and some of the other facade elements aren't in very good shape, and they're, they're just looking to do a refresh. Won't be expanding or adding to the building in any way, it'll just be replacement of materials to bring it into a better condition and sort of following City Mattress's new design style. We have Vince Rondazazi and Gary McCamey here, representing City Mattress and Design Works Architecture, and they can answer any questions the Board may have.
So essentially, is it, we're really looking at just updating, replacing windows? What are the, what are the changes? It's brown now, isn't it? And this looks like it's going to be gray? Is that a change?
It's sort of a brownish-gray now.
Mm-hmm.
The problem we have, this is Gary McCamey, I'm the president of Design Works. The problem we have now is that the skylight system leaks horribly. So when we went out to investigate that, we also discovered that the existing cladding for the building is also decaying, and the substrate behind that is also decaying. So our concept is to take the existing slope glazing that are to the left and to the right of the entrances and make that a standing seam metal roof that dark bronze that matches the rest of the center. To take the slope glazing that is between the entrances and update that to a new skylight system. And then the existing cement fiber boards that's on the building, all of that will be pulled off. The sheathing behind it is decayed, so we're going to replace the sheathing and then replace the siding with new metal panels.
Okay.
And it's different colors. There's three, two shades of gray, a charcoal, and a white.
And with the color choices, in your opinion, how does it match up with and complement the rest of the plaza?
Personally, I think it complements the rest of the plaza quite well.
All right. We have...
Yeah, so the, the older sections of the plaza, especially heading towards Wegmans, is already a dark color.
Yep.
I think it's either brown or black, that's sort of their existing. Then they have the signs on front of it. So I think this gray is going to fit in with sort of the dark, it's hard to see on the screen here, but this is a dark color existing.
Okay. Now you submitted some, like a color sample sheet of finishes? Have you settled on a particular color or are you...
Yeah, yes, we've called out all the colors on the elevations that we submitted.
Okay.
And, you know, once again, the they're all labeled on the, I can call them out to you, our Vince can sit there. Vince, you're here, why don't you let us know all the colors that we selected?
Okay, first of all, let me just mention that on the sheet of elevations, Sheet A100, the black and white sheet, all of the color names are listed on Drawing 1, East Elevation.
Okay.
So they would also correspond to what's happening on the North Elevation, which is higher up on the sheet. So anyway, the first gray color, the lighter gray color, is ATAS Color Number 33 Ash Gray. And I believe Doug got, received from the sales rep for ATAS International the color chips of these colors that we have listed on the elevation.
AJ's flipping through it right now.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking for those right now. I think I must be blind. See slate gray, dove gray, charcoal gray, rocky gray, silver smith titanium.
Well, those were the first ones we had sent to you, but then we had John Fenskermonker, who is the sales rep for ATAS International and Near Estate. He was supposed to send you revised color chips with these names.
I don't believe we received them at this time, unfortunately.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Did you say you did not receive them?
Yeah, we didn't, we did not receive that. We got the first color chip sample book, and that's what I think AJ is looking through right now.
Yeah, received on November 4th. There, I mean...
Yeah, and then the reason...
We don't...
The color is very close.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're not here to...
If they're very similar, it's just a different material. The colors are almost identical.
Yeah, we're not here to bust your chops about very slight shade and hue differences.
Thank you.
You know, that's something that, you know, we do want it to complement the plaza well and, and look good, so that it's something that you can be proud of and we can be proud of when it's all complete.
Well, and we appreciate y'all working with us, and that's kind of why we kept refining it, because their work, as we got into it, we decided that, that's why we, you know, had y'all postpone to this meeting, is we did come up with better products, and they're, they're very durable products. And also, this last-minute change with the skylight system, it's actually going to be fabricated locally. It's going to be a complete, you know, whereas Collier was going to give us, give one guy the sticks and somebody else had the glass. The systems we're now going to use fabricated locally, it's going to be a total install system from a single-source supply. And the, I guess, the dark bronze that's currently on the shopping center and on our store will remain. It'll be the standing seam metal over where we still have, you know, the expanses of glass on the long sides, that dark bronze will be great. We also reflect that on the panels on the building, the darker panel. And the shade of grays that we have selected, they will work really well with the rest of the shopping center. We do feel really good about it, and, you know, like you said, we've done quite a bit of work in Penfield over the years, we love working with y'all, so.
Okay, great. Anybody else have, you know, I'm, I'm good with this.
I'm good. Thank you.
Jim, how about you? Any comments? You got to unmute, Jim.
Yeah, no, these are great improvements, AJ. I'm in support of it.
Okay. All right. Staff okay with this?
Yeah.
All right, why don't we, somebody want to move?
Yeah, a motion to approve these changes.
Tidings, second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Gary and Vince. I'll reach out to you guys here in the next few days with an approval letter on behalf of the Planning Board.
Yeah, thank y'all so much, we do appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of the month, great holiday and New Year.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay. Item two.
All right. Item two, 1998 Empire Boulevard. We navigate to it really quickly. 1998 Empire Boulevard, Firecrest Pizza. They are going, they are proposed to take over the existing lease area of what was Speedylicious on the east side of 1998 Empire Boulevard. It is a plaza that has several tenants in it. We recently saw Canandaigua National Bank, because they came in for a facade upgrade. As part of their restaurant, they are proposing to do a pickup window, a new 20-square-foot, I believe, pickup window on the north side of the building facing towards 2,000 Empire Boulevard. All of their orders would be done through the Internet, through an app. So they will order on the app, pay on the app, they drive to the window, just pick up their food from the window and then drive off. There is an existing drive-through at the bank. However, the north side is about 30 feet wide, about, little over what we'd normally have for a two-lane road. So they are showing the site plan with, and staff had some comments to this regard, that like to see some signage to sort of indicate the two different drive-throughs, the fact that on the south side will be Firecrest, on the north side will be Canandaigua National Bank, as well as some signage for safety, including a sort of a watch for cross-traffic sign to indicate to users of the restaurant that after they pick up their meal, to watch that somebody may be coming up on their right, heading to the bank.
Mm-hmm.
As part of this application, they are also proposing to do a facade upgrade on the building. If I can pull those up here. We do not have a rendering for it, however, they have an existing location in Henrietta that they've had open for a couple of years, and it will look in kind with similar materials to their existing store, their existing restaurant in Henrietta. We have Gigar and Parag here on behalf of Firecrest that can answer any of your questions.
Okay. So thanks for coming, guys. The idea behind the new facade treatment would be, would it be virtually identical to the Henrietta location in terms of materials? I mean, obviously, there's going to be some architectural differences, but...
Yeah, exactly, you're right. Almost identical, but like, you know, since it's a wood and natural wood, so there could be like, you know, a little bit here and there.
So they are proposing a wood, a rustic wood board along the front door. That wood would have natural variations in its color.
Right. Okay. How about any lighting adding to the building, facade, lighting, decorative, anything like that?
So in terms of lighting in the Henrietta, the way we have it, we have an LED light, a strip LED over that, that, what do you call it, the red stripe that we have on the building. So in the nighttime, like, you know, the LED, like, you know, from outside, like, you know, highlight that red stripe.
So that looks, that looks like neon, maybe yellow, neon kind of thing?
It's, probably you can call it neon, but yeah, it's a yellow LED light, yeah.
Yeah, well, what?
Yeah.
It's warm white?
The one you just have it right there, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so it's not, it's not yellow, it's white?
It's a yellow light, like, what do you call it, like, you know, the warm yellow light that usually, like, you know, you have it in the restaurant or in our home, that are the same color.
Okay. So it's warm white?
Warm light, correct, yes. Yeah, it's not a yellow, it's warm.
I would almost call it antique white type. I would almost call it antique white type, very low color temperature?
Yes, yeah, exactly, which usually you have it on like, you know, outside patio, like, you know, they would have a string light
Yes.
where you have like, you know, that color, that, the warm color.
Okay, and that just kind of provides a glow?
Exactly, yes, yeah, mm-hmm.
How about illuminating the signs? You have white?
Yes, yes, so sign will be illuminated in, in white color, uh, yeah.
They are currently before they, last month, they went to the zoning board, uh, for signage and for, uh, change of use.
Okay. Okay. What do you anticipate is the use for the drive-through in terms of, um, times a day and, uh, frequency of visitors? Is it going to be where you have people stacked up at five-thirty at night, uh, waiting to get their food, or do you, uh? I mean, I'm assuming you have a, a, a window, a pickup window in Henrietta?
Yes, correct, yeah.
And what's, what's, what's the busiest time for that and typically, how many cars per five minutes or whatever?
Yeah, so it will be having in Henrietta since last two years, same thing, drive-through pickup window. Uh, and in terms of frequency during, so it's a pizza, so we, our, our, uh, like, you know, our busy time is in the evening time. Uh, throughout the day, we don't see like, you know, that many cars coming, because usually for the lunch, people prefer to come in the restaurant, it's daylight time, and usually you see like, uh, customers like, you know, coming from either corporate customers or, uh, coming from nearby, uh, like, you know, if they are working. So tho- those customer come to, uh, come inside and have their lunch. And during the dinner time, I would say between five and eight o'clock, we see some cars coming. We, in, in two years, like, you know, we, we there in Henrietta and we never see like, you know, cars piling up, like, you know, you would see very steady traffic between five and eight, one or maximum two car at the window at a time. And I would say frequency would be like, you know, uh, one car or two car every five to ten minutes.
Okay, so you don't get backed up like a McDonald's or a Starbucks or Tim Hortons or something?
No, we don't. We, we don't get backed up, and another, another good thing, like, you know, as, as somebody just mentioned here, that, uh, everything paid online. Uh, uh, so they, and we, our online, uh, system notify the customer when to arrive. Uh, we, we give them a specific time, like, you know, uh, so that's, the customer knows when to come. Uh, so that's another good part.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, what are, what are thoughts from the rest of the board?
What's the hours of operation for the restaurant?
In Henrietta, so currently, we have like, uh, from eleven-thirty to nine-thirty in Henrietta. Most likely, we're going to keep the same in Webster. Maybe after like, you know, uh, currently like, you know, we are in a COVID situation and all that stuff. But, uh, let's say once everything, uh, in, uh, like, you know, the COVID is out and we are out of that situation, we may have like, you know, maybe half an hour later, so maybe we will do, uh, from eleven o'clock to, to ten o'clock. But we, we not planning to open like, you know, very late. Uh, it's, it's a family restaurant, we have a, a pizza and ice cream. So it's, it's a family-friendly, kids-friendly, it's not a bar, so we, we not planning to open very late. Thinking Henrietta, uh, usually on Friday, Saturday, when, when we were not in the COVID situation, we were staying up Friday, Saturday till ten, whenever will be on that.
How many days a week?
Yeah, it's a seven days a week, yeah.
Seven days a week, eleven to ten? Eleven to tens, seven days a week, correct?
Yeah, eleven to ten, seven days a week, yeah, I would say so, yeah.
Okay. Now, the, the traffic here with the drive-up window, you don't usually see, see a problem with your customers. What about when the, have you ever went out there and taken a look at that bank when it gets busy? What about when the Canandaigua National Bank is backed up? Will that be blocking your customers in once they pick up their food from getting out?
Now, the good thing already, so as I mentioned, the Canandaigua Bank, and most likely their traffic is during the daytime. And our traffic is in the, in the evening time between five and, and eight o'clock. So that's a, a very good split, uh, uh, between like, you know, bank traffic versus our traffic. And, and Canandaigua has a two-drive-through, and, and we were there like, you know, we were checking, uh, we were there like, you know, a few days and monitoring, and they also have a very steady traffic. But it's like, you know, maybe one or two customer at a time. I, uh, in, in our observation, we, we never noticed like, you know, car, cars piling up there, especially in the evening time when we were there.
Okay, you're not going to have any entertainment or anything like that, correct?
Any.
Entertainment? Entertainment?
Uh, no, we are planning at, at this point, when you say entertainment, like live entertainment?
Yeah, live entertainment, anything like that?
So we, we, we haven't done in Henrietta, and we don't have planning Webster, but in future, I know like, you know, it has a really good outside sitting area, and maybe like, you know, once we are out of this COVID situation, we may think about it, but at this point, there is no plan.
Okay.
And even if we do it, it would be like, uh, maybe o- once a week in the evening kind of a thing. What, once or, well, not, I would, I would say once a week, maybe, uh, a couple of times a month, uh, in the evening. If, if, let's say, if there's a local group, like, you know, they want to come play music, something like that.
You have to get that approved, you realize that, right?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, what about the, uh, presently like exhaust systems and stuff, uh, for the food? Do you have to change any of that, uh, equipment for the restaurant, your restaurant?
Yeah, so the good thing is, uh, this was a prior pizza restaurant, and they have existing vent, uh, for the oven. Uh, so we had like, uh, our, our own manufacturing company, like, you know, the reps, the technician came out from that company, they inspected everything, and they, they did say like, you know, the existing vent, which is there, uh, which will perfectly work fine with the new oven that we are getting in, into the premises. We are not planning to do any, uh, fry anything in the restaurant, so we technically, we don't need any hood, but there is a existing hood there, which, uh, we, we going to keep it, uh, in, in case, in, in future, if, if you want to do something or warm it up. But our main, uh, all our food like, you know, get, uh, gets into the oven and, and the vent for the oven is access, uh, already there in the premises, and we not changing that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, I had two questions. For your particular drive-up, will there be any signage or something to indicate, make it clear that that is your drive-up versus the bank? Would there be any kind of awning over it or some, some way to identify that that's your drive-up?
Yes, uh, so a few things that we are doing, uh, first, before ma- they make a left turn in, in that drive-through lane, there will be a sign on the light pole, the light pole is in a, in a very good pole, uh, location where we can put a sign right there that keep left for the Firecrest and right for the C and B. And, and once they make a left turn into that drive-through area, there will be a striping on the road, uh, which will say like, you know, which lane, the left lane is for Firecrest and right lane is for C and B. On top of that, that pop out, uh, that box that we are building, uh, for the, for the drive-up, uh, drive-through pickup. Uh, there will be another sign, uh, that will, will put it there that this is a Firecrest, uh, drive-up or drive-through pickup window, uh, and, and there will be an awning as well on, on top. So it will be very clear indication like, uh, when our drive-through windows.
Okay, and I see, I see the, um, cross-traffic warning sign.
Yeah.
For striping, how will the striping work once your customers leave your drive-through and let's say there's cars in queue for the bank? Obviously, they have to then go to the right and, um, pass the, uh, the cars that are queued for the bank.
Yeah, so I, there is a enough distance between our, uh, drive-through pickup window uh, and, and the Canandaigua, uh, that ATM machine, their, their windows, they have two. So we not expecting like, you know, that significant queue from the Canandaigua customer all the way to our, our, uh, uh, drive-through pickup window. So I, I assume like, you know, there will be some, like, you know, gap to, to, for customers to go on the right side. And then they will have this tra- uh, this caution sign, uh, watch out for the cross-traffic. And on top of that, we are, we are proposing to put, uh, uh, the, I think it's called it, the glass, the cervix glass, I think that's what it's called. Uh, so, uh, so, so the cars in both the lanes can see if, if there is anything in the blind spot.
Oh, yeah, the mirror.
Okay.
With a mirror.
Yeah.
Yeah, the mirror, yes, yeah.
And where's, maybe I don't, where's the mirror located?
It'll be.
Probably right in front of the.
It'll be on the right.
Yes, yeah, right, uh, exactly.
So you're sitting there with all those convex things that.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Jim, anything?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to know if they plan on serving alcohol?
We are, uh, serving alcohol in terms of beer, so we don't keep, uh, hard alcohol like, uh, any, any, uh, whiskeys, brandies, or, or any kind of liquor, so we don't keep a liquor product. We keep, uh, wine and beer, and, uh, that is again like, you know, very limited, so in, in, uh, I think in Henri- at Henrietta location, we have a few, uh, flavors of wine. Again, it's, it's individual, uh, can or like, you know, bottle that we pour into the glass. Uh, it's not like, you know, the big bottle that we serve on the table, because this is not a sit-down restaurant. Like, you know, we wouldn't have, uh, waiter, waiters. And so if somebody want to like, you know, grab a, a beer, they would come to the counter, we'll, we'll have like, you know, few cans. The, and, and we also have the draft beer, and we are planning to get around eight to maximum ten flavors of beer and maybe four or five flavors of wine.
So this is not just a restaurant, this is a bar restaurant?
I, the reason I wouldn't call it a bar, because as I mentioned, there is no liquor, uh, that we will be serving, no, no whiskeys, brandies, or any hard alcohol that we'll be serving. And even in a beers and, uh, wines, we have a very limited choice and selection. Uh, yeah, we won't have like, you know, let's say if we go to any bar, they would have like, you know, entire bar for the, for the liquor. Here like, you know, we have a very small selection and, uh, small choice.
But you will have eight different beers on tap plus some canned beers?
Uh, so eight, yeah, eight draft beer and, uh, maybe like, you know, another, uh, four or five flavors of, uh, can and bottle beers and, uh, and, and few, few selection of wine, yeah. But very, very small portion of this entire, uh, uh, restaurant, I would say like, you know, it's like one, uh, like, you know, tab which has like, you know, a, a, uh, sorry, one, uh, uh, tower with a, a, a draft beer, yeah.
Then when, when COVID is over.
Yes.
Do you anticipate the seating capacity to be inside?
Uh, say one more time, sir?
The, the seating capacity?
Yeah, so seating capacity, I, I said, this is a four thousand square foot, it's a very, like, you know, big, uh, restaurant compared to what we have in Henrietta. Henrietta is, uh, two thousand square feet, so this is double the size. Uh, and, and plus like, you know, it has a, a outside sitting as well, so we, we don't, uh, expect to, to have an issue with the sitting, uh, and, and we going to keep like, you know, uh, we, we going to keep sufficient sitting, but we won't make it like, you know, overcrowded or like, you know, uh, uh, there's so much setting, yeah.
How many people will the interior of the restaurant hold?
How many sittings in an interior, I am, I, we, we still working on the, our floor plan, but I'm guessing, uh, a max of forty sittings, interior, that's what I'm thinking.
Oh, I'm sorry, how?
Around, around forty to fifty, that's what I'm thinking, but we still working on the floor plan. But I'm thinking around forty sittings in, interior.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the sitting will remain the same how it was like, you know, pre- in the previous restaurant, because we are not planning to make any major changes in terms of the floor plan and the structure. So the sitting area and seating capacity will remain the same how, how it was before approved.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Any staff concerns, comments?
So the, the only concern that the engineering department kind of had was the location of that cross-watch your, you know, cross, uh, traffic. You're, you're expecting people to look to the right to see a sign in the mirror where it might be more beneficial if it was like, right in front of you as you're leaving the drive-up window. So that you can read the sign.
Mm-hmm.
And then say, oh, I need to make sure nobody's coming up along the right-hand side of me. Um, so that, that was one concern. I mean, I, I don't know if that's going to be the say-all, say-all to prevent any kind of potential.
Mishap?
Mishap?
I think it's a good suggestion, we can keep two signs, it, it wouldn't hurt, like, you know, we can keep it where we have proposed, and we can keep one on the left side as well, it wouldn't hurt, hurt. The one thought we had while we kept it on the right side, because when people like, you know, once they take their food, their approach would be to go towards the right. And so either they will be checking the blind spot on their, in their car mirror, or instead they can also make a use of like, you know, this mirror which is there on the right side. So they are not looking at like, you know, two different side, instead they, because when you go, when, because any car like, you know, when, when they, then when they want to go to, they want, they would like to go right, I think they, their, their sight or, or their eye will be on the right side. So that was the thought, but we can definitely put one on the left as well.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's something that, I think that's something that you guys can work out.
Well, I mean, when you get excited to get your pizza, the first thing you do is, you know, you want to take off and you forget that you need to look at.
Well, I, I just want to keep it level.
All right, that's true too.
Yeah.
Anyway. All right, so are we good? Uh, you guys want to, uh, move to approve this? Anybody? You guys all right with it, or?
Yeah, if you guys.
Yep.
Think that's enough for that drive-up, I'm good with it.
Ultimately, they will be going back before the zoning board at the next meeting. They were tabled, um, at the zoning board meetings, that the zoning board will still be having a discussion regarding their, um, conditional use, because, uh, rest- sit-down restaurants and takeout restaurants aren't conditionally permitted use within the LB zoning district. They will still be going back before the zoning board regarding their, their conditional use permit to operate as a restaurant. Uh, after this as well.
Okay. So.
Yeah, I had, one more question.
Sure.
Um, I assume the, the building owner is aware of this, is, and the bank is aware of what's proposed?
No, I am not sure about bank, but building owner is aware of it, and, uh, uh, we, when we originally like, you know, working with the lease, we didn't ask them like, you know, to, to, uh, to let bank, no, I think, no, I, I can tell you, yes, bank is also aware of it, because the, we, we did, the building owner did communicated with us that they did send out a note to the bank, and, uh, I don't know thereafter, but, uh, thereafter, we got an approval from the building owner, so I'm sure bank is on, on board too.
Staff did receive a letter from the architect representing the bank, um, or their, their architect that they have on retainer. They reiterated mainly the same concern that staff did, that, um, their, their major concern is the cross-traffic when somebody pulls out from the drive-through for the restaurant and somebody's. somebody's coming to the bank, how to best mitigate and manage that. I did go through, I did go through the proposal with their architect and he seemed, he seemed open to their suggestions.
Okay.
And at the bank, that's, that's an actual teller, it's indicated as teller window, it's not an ATM?
They have a teller window on the left side and there's a freestanding ATM to the right. The teller is open from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Gotcha, okay.
Monday through Saturday, I believe. And the drive-up ATM is a 24-hour. They indicated they believe they get about 70 cars a day.
Okay, now I, now I see the two, okay. Because my only concern, and I don't wanna read too far into this, but if someone couldn't make it all the way over for whatever reason or stayed in that lane, on the teller window, sometimes there's sensors and it may be like a nuisance thing if somebody, if people are driving by and it alarms, well, not alarms, but notifies the bank that there's somebody in that spot.
So for that teller window, you do have to veer to the left. You know, the building is not rectangular, it does pull in to the south, so to get to that inner teller window, you do have to sort of deviate to the left.
You do it on purpose.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I see that now, okay.
So they stated they average about 60 cars per day using the ATM.
And we are also very, very low traffic. And the teller window, I think bank, if they close is at 5:00 and then our cars come after 5:00, so that's again, like, you know, good split between bank traffic and our traffic.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Well, you guys are all right. I guess I'll move to approve it. Is there anybody who wants to second?
Yep, I'll second, you know, pending obviously the detail on the access to the windows through our engineering department.
Okay.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. We'll look forward to getting some pizza soon.
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you very much, really appreciate it, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a great holiday.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you too. Thank you.
I'll be in touch with you guys in the next couple of days with the approval letter on the planning board and I'll get you more details then.
Sure, thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night.
And we do really appreciate everyone's input. I know we, I had a talk with Doug, I had a talk with Jim, and so all their thoughts like, you know, help us like, you know, came out with like, you know, what signage, trapping needs to be done. So really I appreciate all your helps in this.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next item.
All right, our last action item is 2071 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, the Parkside Commons Starbucks. You, I'll pull it up and navigate over there. They originally, before the planning board in early 2020, they were approved on, I believe it was June 11th, 2020. They have come back to do some site plan modifications. I'll pull that up right here. I'll do my best to put the two, the original signed Mylar and the new proposal side by side here for you guys on the screen. So a lot of our original discussion or the board's original discussion centered around sort of access in the plaza. In the initial proposal and what was originally approved, there was an access drive to the north of Valvoline, a two-lane access drive that would be, that would come out sort of on the north end of the property, just south of the exit for ESL. And north of Valvoline, they're proposing to move that south below, or south of Valvoline and in between what would be the new Starbucks in Valvoline. They were looking to do that, too. It would allow easier access to the medical office behind and reduce one of the conflict points that I know the board had issue, were concerned with, with the driving lane being so close to ESL. As part of this proposal, they will be losing a little bit of parking in front of the Starbucks store. They are showing that as landbank parking to the north of Valvoline as well as in other areas of the plaza. We have Fred Rinaldi Jr. and Fred Rinaldi and James Kretikos here. They can go through any additional changes and answer any questions the board may have.
Happy to, good evening, everyone. My name is James Kretikos, I'm with BME Associates. As was just noted, Fred Rinaldi is here with me. I apologize, I don't have a camera available for myself tonight, but I'd like to kinda just walk you guys through the recent site plan changes, which we are here to discuss with you this evening. Really, there was two kind of main driving factors for us to come back and to review this change. The primary one was, as noted, to provide kind of a more direct access to the rear medical building. I know Fred is planning on having some new tenants come into this facility in the future, and so we wanted to make sure that it was a very desirable space, easy to access. You know, coming in through the main entrance, they would have to, you know, kind of work their way around the drive, so this, we felt this helped create more a direct path for them to get to it, which would be more accessible regardless of which way they went, whether they went straight or took the right off of the entrance on 250. The other major change was we were trying to limit some of the construction on the site, reduce the impacts to it, so we can do this kind of as a one-step construction and really maintain access to Valvoline throughout the development period. So by doing that, we've kind of relocated that northern drive and brought it more interior to the site, which also, as noted, does alleviate some of the traffic concerns with both of those drives entering that location. We were able to kind of reconfigure the drive-through stacking to maintain the same number of spaces by kind of looping it back around. So by doing this, we've kind of accomplished a number of things, you know, we reduced the impacts to the site below an acre. We're gonna try and maintain a lot of the existing features out there as much as we can to again, limit impacts to the existing businesses out there. We are maintaining the exact same number of parking spaces. As noted, we're proposing to landbank four of them up in the rear Valvoline area. We don't believe that they'll need those, but because of the way the drive-through and the driveline is being configured, we are taking away a couple of their parking spaces in the existing lot. We were gonna be removing those anyways, but we felt we wanted to leave some room for expansion for them, just in case their business needs to grow beyond what they are currently anticipated as. But in terms of the plaza, we haven't had any parking issues up there, obviously, all year or in the recent past. Everything's kind of overparked and I think, too, when we look at the new tenants in the rear building, I think we'll be doing another evaluation of parking. I think it'll show that we have even less required than what is currently calculated at the site. In regards to the landscape and lighting, we have provided updated versions of those plans for you guys' review. I would say that they're nearly identical to the previously or currently approved plans. We have the same exact light fixture configuration, mine is shifting one pole to put it adjacent to the drive-through. And same thing with the landscaping, it really is the, pretty much the exact same plantings and the same configuration, just shifted a little bit around the drive-through area and where that drive was kind of brought more central to the site. So based on that, we're here to kind of just re-seek a reapproval of this. We feel that this is gonna be a better design than what we had before. We've reconsulted with Frank Dolan, our traffic engineer, and he's in agreement that this is, involves some better site circulation internally for movements and helps alleviate some of the possible confusions with the drivelines being adjacent to each other on the north side and then to the property immediately to the north. So at this point, we are working on finishing up the rest of the engineering documents. We'll be submitting those to the engineering department for their review, you know, the grading and storm, sewer modifications that come with the changes to these plans. And then we'll be working through the rest of approvals, letter credits, and things like that with them, depending on you guys' action tonight. But I'm sure if you guys have any questions, me or Fred would be more than happy to talk through any of the design that we've presented here.
Okay. Thanks, James. Fred, just a quick question on the landbank parking being with the, right next to the Valvoline, is that, if that needed to be done, does your lease with them allow for that to happen?
Yes, because they're the single beneficiary of that parking area. They are in essence in control of where, when, and how. And I think their biggest concern would be the disruption to the business operation, which we do have ancillary staging to accommodate and eliminate any concern with that regard. So this is, those are spaces that they don't need now. And when I say now, I'm excluding, I'm excluding any position from COVID. So they don't, we don't anticipate that that would be, those four spaces would be pulled into, into need anytime within the next three, four, or five years. And I would guess that within that same time period, you'll see some pretty, or some other changes and improvements to the plaza that'll afford us some additional opportunities.
Okay. Okay. That's really the only question I have. How's staff with this?
I mean, we're generally supportive of it. I guess my only really question is on the bypass lane for it. At this point, it kind of, the new design kind of shows that you've already ordered and so I'm just curious on why still needing the bypass lane.
Good question.
The bypass lane is something, this is James from BME again, the bypass lane is something that's desirable to Starbucks, although it's not a requirement. We did try to maintain it with shifting the east-west drive south of the Valvoline. We did lose a little bit of land to accommodate the full bypass lane going, you know, prior to the order window, but we did still feel it was appropriate to have the bypass lane. It does help with some other things, snow removal, and then just if somebody does wanna get out sooner, they aren't stuck, if they turn in by accident, they aren't stuck behind, you know, the full line of cars waiting, they'll at least be able to kind of sneak out sooner. So it's kind of a quality of life thing. We're providing the most room that we have available at the site. But again, it is not a requirement of Starbucks, it's just typically a desire, and we'd like to maintain where we do have it, just for those reasons.
Okay. Rest of the board members, comments?
I have one question. The, the east-west lane that's between Starbucks and Valvoline, is that one-way going east?
Looks like it's two lanes.
Is it two? Oh, I see it, okay.
So this is, this is actually one of, one of the most important elements of improvement with this design. We have and have been working with for some time, a series of tenants that will be not only joining the campus in that building specifically, but also causing some much-needed aesthetic improvements to that building. We'll be modernizing the medical office building that sits just west of where you're referencing now. It'll include elements that'll allow the building to continue to service medical, medical office, but also enter some hybrid operators who do require a certain retail style of elements. So that, that lane which provides full access in both directions, east and west, was critical to maintain direct access to that front entry area because there is a common corridor. And also supports the mix of tenants that we expect that we'll see, we'll see in there, hopefully by this time next year.
Okay, yeah, I see that now, thank you.
Jim, anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Terry?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. I'm okay with it. Somebody wanna move to approve?
I'll make the motion, tidings to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right. Freddie, you got your changes.
Incredible. Thank you, everyone. Look forward to being there in the physical with you guys soon, but have an incredible holiday, stay safe, and we'll see you, see you on the other side.
You, too.
All right, Fred, James, I'll be, I'll be in contact with you here in the next week to follow up on the meeting.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Anything else?
Our last item is a new business item. It is a site plan extension request from Glendaviers. They were originally approved back on December 14th, 2017. They've received several previous...
Extensions?
Extensions. Their extension is coming up here on the 12th of, their expiration's coming up here on the 12th of December. They're seeking another one-year extension, hoping to get construction started next spring or summer.
Okay, and I think, Jim, you need to recuse yourself on this one?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so let the record show that board member Burton is recused from this discussion. Anybody have an issue?
No. I'll make the motion to extend. You wanna go longer than a year, is that good?
If you wanna go two, I'm fine with that. If, I mean, we don't know how long COVID's going.
Pete, is that something?
Pete, we can do that, can't we? He's probably gone.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Can we go two years?
For an extension, approval extension?
I don't think your, I think the code only allows it for a shorter period.
Okay, motion for a year, then?
Long as we can go.
That's cool. I'll, tidings, a motion for one-year extension for Glendaviers.
I'll second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, it's extended. Anything else?
That is all I have for you guys tonight.
Okay, well, everyone, thank you for coming. Everybody that's watching on TV, the millions of you that tune in every month or two weeks to get excited about planning in Penfield, we appreciate it. And with that, we will adjourn until the new year. Have a great holiday and see you on the other side, people.